Raymond, I just want to thank UA3 and all the other organizations for coming here and putting this together. The candidate vote are very important, especially with elections coming up. We definitely want to hear from our elected as well as the candidate on what their stances are on many of the issues that our communities are facing. And UA3 has always been great with this. They've always approached us and asked, can we do this? I'm like, of course. We definitely want to know like what our candidates have in their minds before the election. You know, we don't want to know afterwards. We want to know now. So thank you UA3 and all the other organizations. I can't remember. It's a really big list. But thank you for coming together and putting this together. We can't do this without the community. So thank you.
Thank you for hosting this with no charge. Thank you, Raymond. I can't thank you enough. Lanny, David, David Lee, it's been fantastic. Diana from L E S, Refill, E F L, L E S L E F L one. Diana, thank you so much. Chi Look and the entire team and everybody here, thank you and all the partners, thank you very much. And now, and now I'll let you get right into it, David. Oh, you do the safety thing, exits and all that kind of stuff.
Exits right there.
Exits, exit.
Wash the toilet if you use them, okay?
All right, David.
Thank you. Thank you, Don, and thank you, Raymond, for having us. Thank you, UA3, for hosting this and setting this all up. It's always a pleasure. And thank you, audience, for coming today. And of course, thank our candidates for showing up and having this forum for us. It's a real service to our community. Tonight, we have a pretty simple agenda. I will ask six questions. The candidates each will have two minutes to answer the question. And we'll give them 30 seconds each to rebut or answer back with a comment of the other candidate. After that, we're asking the candidate to answer two, ask two questions of each other and have a nice discussion about that. I look forward to a very informative discussion. It's not a debate, more or less a discussion. And so that the community here can all understand what the issues are as well. Our timer is Diana. She will warn you while we have 15 seconds left in your time slot. Any questions? Okay, great. So let's get started. First question, I'm going to direct this to councilmember Marte first. I'm sorry, just reminded when I was here. Yes, each of the candidates, please have two minutes to introduce yourselves. I'm sorry. Maybe councilmember Marte, you go first.
First of all, I want to say thank you to UA3, Don, Chi, David, the whole team for every single election cycle. Bringing this important discussion to the public, not only in person but also virtual. I want to thank Raymond and the C C B A for hosting this. And thank you, David Lee, for being the moderator and for helping, for showing up. And if people don't know me, my name is Christopher Marte. I've been the councilmember for the past two years. And when I first took office, Chinatown in our district was in shambles. We were in the middle of the pandemic. People were waiting online to get food. People didn't know what our district, what their housing situation, what their job situation was like. And so we had a lot of work ahead of us. There are short-term issues that we're facing, but long-term issues as well that this district has been facing for decades. But me and my team went to work on day one to make sure that our community comes back and continues to thrive. And when you walk around Chinatown today, you see people on the street, you see new businesses opening. You see people actually getting the representation that they need, not just in City Hall, but on the streets. I've rallied with many of these communities to fight against jail, to make sure that tenants were protected, to make sure that we pass zoning policies like the Chinatown Working Group Plan so we can continue to have a working-class community. We started legislation that workers from our community wanted, like the No More 24 Hours, the end of 24-hour shift for home attendants. We talked to the mayor, sometimes pressured him to open Park Row to invest in our parks and fix our streets. And on every single issue, we have delivered. And this past year, there was a competitive primary. I had three opponents and we won overwhelmingly because people understood the work that we did every single day and the larger mission that we're trying to achieve in this district. We're trying to change politics of the old and make sure that there are no divisions. Whether you live in Tribeca, Chinatown, the Lower East Side, we're one community fighting together forward. And that's what I want to continue to do for the next two years. Thank you.
Ms. Q?
Hi, I'm Hannah Q. I'm running for as the Council District One. And although we have passed our pandemic challenges, however, our district and the entire New York is still suffering by the progressive epidemic. And my opponent here, a lovely guy, I like him as a friend, but his policy is a progressive Democrat policy. And progressive policies is running our city to the ground. We cannot afford it. Do you know that progressives are offering 10 grand for each migrant each month? We cannot afford it. And this is a bottomless offer. There's no end to it. Even when the mayor said, "We cannot afford it. It's going to destroy our city," the progressives say bad things about the mayor unanimously. So we cannot afford another progressive on the council. We need sensible government who have management experiences and who will bring common sense to our management. And that will be me. I hope I can represent our New Yorker's voice, our 82% of New Yorkers who do not like to see the migrant crisis go out of control. I hope I can represent your voice. Progressives are not Democrats. So I hope this year, all the true Democrats and Republicans, conservatives, and all the independents will join together against progressives running our city to the ground. That's 20 progressives are running our city to the ground. We, together as the city council, need to overcome this very disastrous epidemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we think we have our work cut out for us tonight. My first question will be directed towards the councilmember first. It's about bicycles, motor scooters, electric bikes. A woman was killed not far from here tragically by a speeding bicyclist. Everyone here had a test to seeing these two-wheelers speeding, passing red lights, unregistered, mounting the sidewalk. So the question is basically, what is your position on these bicycles and two-wheelers? And what have any should be done?
Thank you for the question. And my deepest condolences goes to the family of the individual that was crashed and her and died out of the situation. My, my family lives really close to there. My parents are seniors. So for me, it made me think twice about the environment that we're living in. But there are actions that we can take. There's a legislation that being prime sponsor by councilmember Lynn Shulman that will actually put the onus on the delivery app companies. So if any delivery worker passes a red light or does any type of traffic infringement, the civil penalty will be given to the company. So then it gives them an incentive to tell their workers to not do illegal traffic violations. And I think that's the only way that's going to work. We have a lot of proposals in the city council. I believe some are going to take five to 10 years to actually be implemented. And that's the biggest problem. Right now, we do have traffic laws in New York City. It is illegal to drive a moped without a license plate. It is illegal to drive on the sidewalk. It is illegal to pass a red light, but there is no enforcement. And what we've seen time and time again, after someone gets hurt, there's a cry for more help. But I think by passing smart legislation like Intro 1000, our work can actually take a step forward to have safer streets. Thank you.
Ms. Q, two minutes?
Thank you. Not that long ago, about two, three months ago, there is a man on the subway platform used human feces as smack on an innocent passenger waiting for the train to come by. Two weeks later, I read another news about this man. He was using bricks to smash a storey store. Guess what? He was released after a horrific crime, a violent, physical violence. So our city, e-bike, is just one of the examples. We have laws, but we have no enforcement. From the DA, Brad, Alvin Brad, who is a buddy, political buddy of my opponent, we are suffering the progressive epidemic. The criminals are being released without cash bail and with no consequences. This man was released. That's why he committed the second crime. The guy that killed the lovely woman on Christie Street was arrested and released 12 times. You have the banner, Stop the Hate, yet do you have any enforcement? Do you think city council should stand on guard of our community without another accident happen with no consequences? Do you agree that? If you do, then elect me as your next city council. Thank you.
The position of a city councilor is to introduce legislation, to pass budget. We are not law enforcers. We are not meant to be on the sidewalk all day. There's people to do that job, and that's our police officers. And so I think it's understanding what a city councilperson's responsibility. And I have been taking the steps to make sure that we pass legislation that will be effective and actually implemented.
Not so quick, right, to say it's not my job. How convenient. Of course it is our job. We can definitely influence how it's being done. We can definitely influence how Alvin Brad is doing his job. The government is meant for cross oversight. That's why we have government. We don't have a single position. My position is not stand alone. My position is to make sure we have our, got our entire community protected. And that includes that we will cross oversight for other positions. Thank you.
By the way, we have a translation going on simultaneously. My second question has to do with non-citizen voting. The United States, when you become a citizen of the United States, you swear to uphold the Constitution. You renounce allegiance to the other state that you have come from and you support and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States. My question is, should someone have to pledge to this before they can have the right to vote? And if permanent residents do not have the right to vote, how can they be represented in this community? Ms. Q, will you go first?
Thank you. Just like what I just said, we as citizens can never say, okay, I'm a citizen. It's none of my business. I'm a city council. None of the legislation is my business. Someone that punch, someone don't enforce the law, none of my business. We can never say that. The same reason, when citizens are doing their duties, being a loving and compassionate citizens, they will enact laws that will put the non-citizens who are living among us into our heart. But I think there's a sacred honor to be a citizen. I am a first-generation immigrant. I came to America as a graduate student when I was 19 years old, a very young lady. And I became a citizen after the company proved that they can only hire me to be their employee. And I waited for another five more years before I become citizen and I go through city tests. I learned a lot of history. I start to love America. And I love New York same way. We love our city. That love will not be deterred. That's why I said, I don't look at my role so limited. I want to show the love. And I believe a lot of the citizens here have the same passion, that we want to love our city. And that is the key for citizens voting in our, in our elections. And I firmly believe we should uphold, uphold the honor to be a citizen, the pride to be a citizen. And citizens should take the same duty of electing official that can represent our voice. Thank you.
Councilmember?
There's an old saying in this country that says, "No taxation without representation." The city council four years ago passed legislation to allow green card holders to vote in municipal elections, not federal elections, municipal election. And I fully support that. You know, we have millions of green card holders here in New York City that don't have a say in our government. And I believe they should. They pay taxes. They contribute to our economy. Their kids go to our schools. Their grandparents go to our senior centers. And they're affected by the legislation that's passed in the city council. So they should have a say and they should be able to vote. So I fully support it. And I know it will create a drastic change in our citywide politics if these people have a voice. And I support that voice.
A drastic change. Did you hear? He just said that. He believe if we allowed non-citizens to vote, there are going to be a drastic change in our policies. And he said that, and I agree with him. And that's precisely why we shouldn't, why we shouldn't. Do you know how many migrants comes last month? 260,000. And it's going to go up. It's already going to bigger than Wyoming. So do Wyoming's people have any safe policies? These non-citizens will overpower that. So, no. Thank you.
I think there's a technical difference between people who are seeking asylum and green card holders. Green card holders have been dead by our government, have a right to live and live out their dreams in this city and this country. And so I think there is a big difference. And I don't want Republican talking points to spread misinformation to our community.
My next question has to do with authorities in Chinatown. I coined this phrase, Chinatown is burning, from Sandy Mulberry Street to the electric bike shop to the Lynn Singh Association and others. What can we do about it? Councilmember, your turn to go first.
So in the city council, we already passed legislation to make sure that people are better protected in their home, especially from compostable batteries. As we all know, there is a huge black market of refurbished batteries. And these are the batteries that cause instant explosion and has led to a lot of fires throughout our differing status. But every time there was a fire, my office was on the scene. And not just on the scene to take a photo, to post it on Facebook, Twitter, or WeChat. We were there to help the tenants, make sure that they could find permanent affordable housing, to work with the landlord, to make sure that they could find and fix every single permit that's needed so then they could reopen the homes of thousands of people in New York. And we've done that from AD Lawbury down to Madison to here with Lynn Singh. I remember being on the phone with Kenny, with Jackie Wong that night, the next day, weeks later, to make sure that they had all the support from the city government as possible. We can't control what's going to happen next, but we can put in measures to prevent the worst from happening. And we've done that in the city council by passing legislation to only have certified batteries being sold on our streets. We've been working with the Adams administration and the F D N Y to do crackdowns on the shops that are selling dangerous illegal e-bike batteries. And so we've been doing the work to make sure that there is a safe environment, a safe home, a safe business in our community.
When it comes to Chinatown's burn, I think it touched a very deep point in my heart. Chinatown housing are old. It needs renovations. Yet, we may not have the techniques or even more so, not the funding. A lot of these buildings are owned by small owners. They are not a big corporate. And with rent control and the tenant priority policies that progressive Democrats are making, small owners have nowhere to collect the funds to do their renovations. There's no way that you can renovate a whole building with their electric wires. That's 100 years old, 50 years old, long, very old electric wires because there's no funding. And we need to help them, but the policies are not there because we are being ignored by the current city council. They don't hear the voice of small landlords. They only hear maybe a very loud other voice, a progressive voice. And landlords become enemies. But landlords needs the funding and the city council. My city council, if I get elected, I will commit to help small owners to hand the funding to renovate the building. And I want systematic solutions. One of the proposals that I hope I can present to the entire city is to ask the rich developers to be also responsible for one street or two streets of our renovations. I wonder why the current city council did not propose that. Thank you.
I fully support rent stabilization, rent control. If we get away with that, thousands of people in Chinatown will be displaced. Honestly, it's the rent legislation that was passed in the state a few years ago that actually give protection to many of the tenants, many of the seniors, many of the working-class people that live in Chinatown, that build this community that can stay here. So I am shocked to hear that my opponent is against rent stabilization and rent control when we live in a working-class community. Yeah.
Why do you reflect? I just said, I think the solution need to be systematic, from the developers to support the local old buildings. That's where our source come from. Okay, that's where our source come from, Marte, not from the renters. And who can do that? Only the city council can look at the map systematically and not to put the burden on the landlords. They have nowhere to go. But the burden should be put on developers to sponsor this kind of renovation. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will go to Michael first. It's about the jails. It seems as if the enthusiasm for fighting it has kind of waned in the last few weeks or months. The mayor was down here for a town hall, and it was not a protest in front of the mayor's meeting. Would you like to chime in on that? Would you feel the future of the jail?
Thank you. Another question. Last year, I participated in the no-mega-jail protest against full organizing. Our city council, Christopher Martin. And at that time, I was thinking about running for office. And I was like, you know, I really like this guy. He's against the jail. He's like with me. And I like him very much. Until later, I discovered what he did cannot be done. Why? Because he wants to close Rikers. That is the card underneath the protest of mega jails. He has a card of protesting mega jails, but the real card is closing Rikers. If you close Rikers, the inmates have no place to go. And if you close Rikers, you have to release the bad guys smacking the human feces back on the street because that's all complete system. You can no longer afford to, you can no longer let the violent criminals who may be dangerous in jail because you have no space. That's why they have to build borrow-based jails in your backyard. Not just us, not just us in Lower Manhattan, but in the entire city. Except Staten Island, they, they spend their block. So the entire New York City is suffered by the policy of closing Rikers. And outside of that, of course, you will have borrow-based jails. And of course, you will have mega jails. And of course, it's so convenient to say, oh, it's out of my hands. I can no longer fight about it. But I can promise you, if I'm elected, I will continue to fight this fight. And I will give the city a very reasonable proposal. Let them build Rikers as the immigration center, just like Ellis Island.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember.
I believe my opponent said something really important. Just a year ago, she got involved in the jail fight. I and many of you in this room have been working against the jail for the past five years. We've organized this community. We mobilized it. We put pressure on the Blazer and Margaret Chen to now move forward with this plan. And they did, against all the wishes of our community. But that didn't stop us. We put pressure on all the mayoral candidates. And we got the candidate for mayor, Eric Adams, to stand with this community and say that there shouldn't be a jail in that place. And what he did on day one, he turned his back on our community. He decided to move forward with this plan. And so we pivoted. We said, okay, let's move forward with adaptive reuse. We don't have to demolish this, potentially putting a lot of people's lives, the seniors in Trump Act, in threat, putting the small businesses out of business just along Bay Street. We said, we have a win-win solution for our city. And what we heard from City Hall was crickets. But that didn't stop us. We filed lawsuits to delay the process. We did so much work that even till today, we still have a chance to continue to fight this.
Strategy failed.
While we see other boroughs, other boroughs are already...
Strategy failed.
Please stop. That's wrong.
No time to stop.
Everyone, please stop.
No time to stop.
Everybody, please stop. Please keep your...
Strategy failed.
Eric, stop. That's wrong.
That's wrong.
And to... I will have to ask you to leave. You can't control yourself.
Keep quiet, man.
We are at a point where the city doesn't have money, where the city won't be able to build the facility by 2027. What I believe is going to happen in that spot is nothing. It will be as it is for a really long time. And the fight continues to say that no new jails in our community. And so I don't think, we've gone up a lot of obstacles along this way. There was a lot of detours. But one thing that hasn't stopped is the fight from my office, from myself, and from this community. And we want to fight.
That's not a real fight. That's a fake fight. The real fight is to keep Rikers open. If we don't keep Rikers open, we will have to build borrow-based jails. So if you're really, really sincerely fighting for not building borrow-based jails, you have to reform Rikers and keep Rikers open. That is so simple. So everybody know that Rikers must be kept open as a useful facility. Otherwise, you will have borrow-based jails. Let's just be honest with ourselves. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's talk about Rikers for a quick second. Rikers is an inhumane facility. Every single month, we hear about new deaths. We hear about corruption. We hear about the lack of transparency that's happening there. No one should be waiting for their day in trial, in court, on Rikers Island. Right? They haven't convicted a crime. Most people aren't Rikers Island for one year, just waiting to be in front of a judge. No one should have to go through all that trauma. And so what we were asking for was adaptive reuse of the location so we can have a humane facility, so we won't create disruption in our community. And so we can have a win-win-win solution for everybody.
Yes, okay, thank you. To change the jail from Rikers to Mulberry Street is not going to change the management. To change it to Wall Street is not going to change management. If the province management, the fixed management, don't change the location. We need to reform Rikers and keep Rikers open and protect our community. I don't want the tallest building in Chinatown to be a jail. It's going to be taller than Confucius Plaza.
Again, did you have a response?
I get one more.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
You know, it's so convenient for Helen just a year ago to get involved in this fight as she's running for office. But when we look at all the crises, whether it's the jail fight, housing situation, climate change, Helen was nowhere to be seen. I ask anyone in this community, other than seeing her poster on Bowery Division, have you seen Helen Chu at anything in this community?
Moving on, and we're having a lively discussion between the candidates. I think you to have them, let them have the discussion first. Okay, thank you. My next question, council member, you will go first. This past Sunday, the mayor's top aide on television said that the Biden administration must do its job and close the border. That same day, the governor, Governor Hochul, was on TV as well. And she said that we needed to limit the border and control the border. You know, it recognizes the sea change in the policy of New York. Are either one of you willing to agree? And can you give us your view of the migrant crisis?
As a city council member, we have to do what we can to make sure that people are living with human, basic human rights and human dignity. And that's what my office has done. We have welcomed these new visitors to our district. We have placed them in hotels in our district. And we make sure that their kids had what they need, whether it's even a backpack, social service providers, to make sure that they can have the dream that many of our parents or many of us have today. We're giving people an opportunity to improve their life. And so from a city council member, I support helping these people no matter what. All they want is to be safe and to work. And so I've been joining the mayor and his team on calls for worker permanence to be authorized to make sure that we have humane facilities for people to stay in while they figure out what their status is. There's a reason why people are coming here. Some people have walked from Chile all the way to New York City. And we shouldn't say, no, you have to go back. We should welcome them, just as people welcome my parents when they came here. When my dad came to New York City, he was undocumented. And if someone would have sent him back home, I, my siblings, wouldn't have the opportunities or even contribute to the community that we do today. And so I think we have to welcome them and we have to do whatever we can to make sure that people have the right to the American dream.
I can imagine another family and another family who has a son, John Mate, let's say. And who is applying legally and because of someone else who couldn't do it. And then they lost the opportunity. So what is the American dream really? I would like to ask you, what is the American dream to you? I think the American dream is not lawlessness. American dream should be honor, should be wait in line, should respect other people's right ahead of us. What has happened, has happened. May God bless you and your family. But what, how do we move forward as New York? I think we need to move forward with honor. So that's what I want to say about migrant crisis. There are two million Hispanic families. Most of them are my constituents. They are sponsored by my constituents' family to apply for their brother, sister, parents to come to America legally. And there are over one million of Asian-American families applying for their family, their brother, maybe who will be the next councilperson to come to America. But now, they are being completely ignored and put to last our constituents' interest. Their love, their passion for their legal immigrant family and sponsored people are being put last. And what we are celebrating is just cross the border, just row all over the river. It's not pursuit of American dream. And we are not helping weak women and children. Most of them, ninety-seven percent of them, will not be qualified for asylum. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's, I just want to do a quick fact check. There aren't two million Hispanics that have come to New York City that have crossed the border. The data is a hundred thousand people have come to New York City to request help. And currently, there's fifty thousand people being housed by New York City and giving them supportive services. I don't want random numbers to be thrown out there because it used to incite hate and discrimination.
What a monolithic speech. I say two million applicants who are applying legal immigration. I did not say two million has come to America. I say two million legal applicants. I want to put legal applicants first. We should put them first. Thank you.
Moving on to the next question. In the city council, there are caucuses. One being, a new one called the Common Sense Caucus, another one being the Progressive Caucus. My question is to you, and this goes to this Q first. Which of them would you join and why?
Thank you. We used to have about thirty-five council members who were in the Progressive Caucasus. But because they want to defund the police and they are endless running the city now policies, fifteen of the original Progressive Caucasus members left that Caucasus, but still about twenty left, and Christopher Martin is one of them. What a disappointment. I was, I'm quite disappointed. And I am going to join the Common Sense Party Caucasus. Why? It's a bipartisan caucus. We have Democrats, two Democrats in the caucus. That's why I said this year, it's a Common Sense Party versus a Progressive Party. I am on the Common Sense Party line. I work tirelessly to collect those signatures because I think I'm not traditional, very extreme Republican candidate. I am a centrist, common sense, good Republicans. And I work across the aisle, almost all my volunteers are Democrats. And they are true Democrats who love our community. I really don't care about the party hats. I want solutions. I want sensible. If you want to close Rikers, you cannot build mega jail. You have to build mega jail. So something so sensible, so easy. I want to be with the people who can express this voice and I will be your voice. Thank you.
When you look at some of the biggest issues facing our city, raising minimum wage, climate change. Two days last week, we experienced one of the worst floods in New York City's history. This past summer, we had smoke from Canada going into our lungs. When you look at this, you look at the Common Sense Caucus, they're really not doing anything to mitigate any of those issues. While the Progressive Caucus is making sure that workers are protected, that they have a fighting chance to go against some of their sweatshop bosses, pushing back against landlords that are trying to evict people throughout our city, trying to make sure that we pass climate change legislation so we actually have an opportunity to live on this planet for generations. And that's why I chose to stay because I understand the urgency of the moment right now. I want my kids to grow up in Lower Manhattan and not on the water. I want to make sure that my kids have an opportunity to be in a workforce that's protected, that's unionized, so that they can support their family. If we choose to ignore all these issues, I feel like we're going backwards. And I'm in this position to make sure that my community has a fighter in the city council but make sure that we can move forward as one.
Our district is where New York was born. And originally, New York is a very small area, near Wall Street area. And then later on, we expanded our city. That's why you see the shoreline today. That was not how it was before. That's how much we can do. Even there's no land, we can create land. Climate and protecting our land, that is a very good cause. However, currently, if you are on the street, crime is the number one issue in every New Yorker's mind. We need to reign in crime. And Progressive Caucasus is doing nothing but negating. Thank you.
Council member, you have a word on that?
If you live in public housing and every time it rains, your apartment gets flooded. If you work in a job where you haven't been paid in months. If your kid is playing on a playground where the pipes are full of lead. These are the main issues in your life. These are the issues that you care about. And these are the issues that my office and the city council have been fighting to make sure that this is a livable and a successful city for everyone, no matter where you are or what it looks like.
Thank you. That ends my questions and I want to thank those who have given their suggestions on some of these questions. I think it was a very lively discussion. Now we turn to another part of the program where we ask the candidates to ask each other two questions. So I take no responsibility at this part. But I hope that it will be a forward discussion. I'm known to ask that we ask the each question, take about a question and answer, take a total of five minutes with about, you can keep your responses to each other at one minute and just go back and forth a few times and we'll tell you when the five minutes is coming to an end. So let's see. Since we gave you the first question, council member, I'm going to ask this Q to ask you a question.
My opinion is so...
Can I ask a question?
You can ask a question for council member.
Okay, thank you. Our city is suffering a physical crisis. We have no money. We cannot afford the progressive ideologies. And when their policies is when the rubber hits the ground. When the rubber hits the ground, the tire breaks. That's why we see our lives worse than a few years ago. That's why we see our lives is getting worse and worse. And our city council has been ineffective and fail our New Yorkers. First and foremost, the crime. We do not prosecute crime. That cannot be done. There's no consequences when you go to D R Reed and just grab a garbage get bag and then put all the shampoos inside and then they sell it.
Do you have a question for council member?
So what are you going to do about this?
So last year, we voted, or this past summer, we voted on the biggest budget New York City has ever had. We voted on a one-hundred-and-two-billion-dollar budget. And that budget alone had a five-billion-dollar surplus. And so when you hear that New York City has no money, we still have money and we have a lot of money. And it's concerning to me that we have an administration that uses this language of saying we don't have money. Look, I agree, the federal government should do more, right? This immigration issue that we have in New York City is a federal issue. We should get support from them. But that doesn't mean that we have to cut every single agency's budget to make sure that people aren't getting the services that they need. Whether someone could go to Hamilton Madison House and get the mental services or the senior daycare center services that they get there. We shouldn't be cutting our schools' budget. Right now, teachers every single year have to create a GoFundMe site just for additional art supplies. That should not happen. And so, yes, we need federal help on this immigration issue. But our city does have the money to make sure that our agencies are functioning. We have an administration that really believes in conservative fiscal policies that I believe will ruin our city. I'm going to give you one quick fact. In nineteen ninety-nine, or in two thousand and nine, HRA, which does a lot of the benefit services for the most vulnerable, was able to give ninety-six percent of the people the services that they needed. Under this administration, it's forty-four percent. Something is not working and I think it's the mayor's budget cuts that are hurting the everyday New Yorker.
This Q will respond.
When Chris answered the questions, I was very shocked. I was wondering whether he's working for New York City Council or some council for a different city, a different state. We are broke and then mayor had to cut fifteen percent of the budget across the board. And he said, we are not, we have plenty of money, we have a lot of money. Then show me the money, okay? Show me the money. Do not charge congestion pricing. How about that? If you have the money, go do that. Thank you.
I invite Helen and everyone to go to the city council website. There's a tab that's called Budget and you can see line by line our city's finances. And the city council, twice a year, we release projections on these numbers. And so the numbers that I'm stating are factual. The numbers that my opponents are saying, I haven't seen.
So thank you for accusing Mayor Adams for not being factual. So when Mayor Adams needed to cut fifteen percent, what is he thinking? Number two, why do you need to charge congestion pricing if you're so wealthy? Right? So all these are just what we see every day in New Yorkers' life. And why do we have such a high price on our inflation? Now, even a bowl of noodle costs fifteen dollars. New York is suffering from a physical crisis. And we cannot afford the ten thousand per migrant price tag. And that price tag is not going away. Because unless we change the century city law, which when you elected me, I will end it. Otherwise, this is a bottomless crisis we are facing. Thank you.
Council member, last word? Thank you, thank you. But you do get to start to ask this Q the next question.
My question is simple. Helen, how has Chinatown improved since the pandemic?
Chinatown received half a million dollars under our councilman Mate and that money alone is being assigned to a union. And nobody else get a piece of it. And the union will decide who can be hired unless the union approve. Unless the union approved, nobody get a piece of the half a million dollars that is given to our community. So there are some funding coming to our community, but they are not going to people's heads. That also is the same phenomenon I observed in NYCHA. NYCHA receive a lot of funding, but the ceilings are not fixed. The, even the district leader's door is not fixed. And I promise, I say you are a Democrat, but when I'm elected, I promise we will fix your door within the first three months.
Councilmember?
So, so that is why I'm saying, I see some funding flowing around, but they never go to people's heads. They never become effective to improve our community. So that's what I see. And I also see crime has deteriorated even further. Thank you.
The money that we have given to this community is extremely visible. We've given historic levels of funding to public housing, to repair our exteriors, to create new playgrounds. We've given an after-school program at every single public school in our district for the first time ever. We've invested three hundred thousand dollars, P S one-thirty, to redo their playground, to get new HVAC system and windows. Even the YMCA, the Chinatown YMCA, that has been closed for four years, we gave them one million dollars. And I was there this morning, and I saw dozens of people swimming in the pool, working out, mostly seniors. And so the money that we invested is there, it's visible, and it's helping everyday Chinatown residents. And we're not even talking about the money that we have given to our social service providers to make sure that the care is given to every single person in our district. Even U A three, we've been able to secure historic funding from them, from the city council, to make sure that no one goes without food in our district.
Again, again, the money was not effective. We have money going to NYCHA, but NYCHA is suffering. They have crime, they have locks that doesn't work. They have money to install cameras. That money disappeared. We, we did not see that money at work. I don't know where the money go. Maybe you should tell us. Maybe that will be my first question. Where did the camera money go? And we did not install the cameras. And all these very, I think city council is a, is a position where the rubber hits the road. It's about everyday people's lives. You need to use the money to improve people's lives. Safety is an issue. And the funding for improving their condition of living is an issue. We need to have quality of lives. And all these can be improved if we have oversight. And right now, due to the progressive overpowering of the city council, we have no oversight. Because the moment you want to have an oversight, you will be called names. And to make, make sure you, you have no voice. That's why I hope I can be the voice of our common day New Yorkers, of our hard-working middle class, that we can have a voice. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to ask a few members of the audience. We have Frank, we have Ed, who are both part of the Chinatown Partnership. The city council, my office, has given tens of thousands of dollars for security cameras, and the bid has implemented to anyone who wants it. We have Justin Yu, who's the district leader, who really cares about trees. My office, for the past two years, has given the city a hundred thousand dollars to plant new trees and what our district has, new trees. Steve Wong, who's right here, did a backpack drive and a mooncake drive to give people an opportunity to go back to school feeling great and have everything they need to start on the best footing that they can. And so the money is being seized and is being used. And we have the people in the community that are there to also see it right in front of us.
Ms. Q, you can ask the councilmember Martin a question?
As a Republican, we are often being attacked by the topic of termination of pregnancy. So I would like to ask Christopher Martin, as a mother, I do not want to make woman's body an ideological background. Termination of a pregnancy, in my opinion, is a very serious medical surgery that has permanent physical and physiological, psychological consequences. France has a termination limit of fourteen weeks. I think we can match it. What do you think, Martin?
I firmly believe in her body, her choice. We have amazing organizations in our district. We have the headquarters for Planned Parenthood that give people the healthcare services that they need at, without any cost. And I am proud to work with them, to promote them, to fund them, to make sure that people are getting the help and need that they can. And so I believe that people have to, that people can make any decisions that they want. And I stand with them to make sure that people are protected from this white-rank ideology that want to attack the most vulnerable in our community.
You didn't answer my question. I said France has a limit of fourteen weeks to terminate the maximum termination of pregnancy. What do you think?
I believe that any individual can make the decision on themselves. And there should no, be no time limit. Every situation is a case-by-case basis. But they have a right and they have the dignity to say how their own body should be impacted. So I, as a city councilmember, as, you know, an individual in this community, will never tell someone what they should or shouldn't do when it comes to their own body.
Let me clarify. You say up to birth? Can the termination of, can the termination of pregnancy be up to birthday?
I don't believe that there should be a time limit.
What is the limit?
There shouldn't be one.
So there will be no limit until birthday? Can I clarify? That's my question, actually. You haven't answered twice. Can you answer it, please?
I said that there shouldn't be a time limit.
Thank you for that question. Councilmember, answer the last question before we come to closing remarks.
I'm going to make it a little bit more lighthearted. Helen, what's your favorite restaurant?
I like the Yunnan Noodle House. And I tell you why. It's actually sad that I like it. Because I often work late, and when I go with my volunteers, that's the only restaurant still open. And that brings sadness to me. Because even around eight o'clock, a lot of restaurants already closed. I talk to so many owners, they tell me there are so many crime out there, they cannot find workers that wouldn't work past dark. And if you elect me as city council, I will never allow that to happen. I want restaurants to open after eight. So I have more options because I have many, many favorite restaurants. Thank you.
I, I believe that position is outdated. When I came out of House of Joy the other day at nine-thirty, I still saw people in Chinatown eating, having a great time. And what we've seen recently, because of a lot of the policy measures and funding that my office has done, is that we've seen hundreds of thousands of tourists. You know, just this past weekend, I joined Robin Moy and other community leaders to have a huge mid-autumn festival on our streets. And what that brought, energy, excitement, investment, revitalization in Chinatown. And that's what we're going to continue to do to make sure that those restaurants, maybe there's still a few that closes at eight, but to give them the opportunity to stay open much, much later.
I suggest, I suggest, Chris, you should walk around a little bit more, so maybe you see a different picture. And besides that, even if you want a toothpaste, you need to ask the clerk to open the, the box for you to get it. So this, this is the reality that New Yorkers are living. And you can live in a one-million-dollar condo in Financial District or Seaport, but you cannot get a toothpaste. That is the reality. So I think if a city council can walk around our neighborhood a little bit more and visit these convenience stores, they can know our pain. Thank you.
If you have seen me on the streets of Chinatown the past month, please raise your hand. I think people see me on the streets.
Now why is the reality so different? Did you report it differently? So that you can, you can fit your narrative? That is a bigger problem. You see the things, but you don't speak the truth. Because you want to, you want, because you want to pro, po, push your progressive narrative, meaning we are all set, there's no crime problems. Why? Because Helen wants to solve crime problem. If there's no crime problems, we don't need Helen. Actually, I like the idea. If there's no crime problems, do not elect Helen. Because, because you are the thing. But we have a crime problem. We need to fix our city. We need to bring back safety. We cannot stay on the subway and fear for our lives. Just the other day, I took a subway, and there's someone full-blown naked. And we need treatments for mental illness. We need solve, we need to solve the crime. Thank you.
Well, it looks like we're just getting started, but unfortunately, we're
Ask the question of congestion pricing. How's it going about pricing?
Sorry, we come to the end of our session, and we're ready for closing remarks. Councilmember, your guess?
I want to say thank you again for everyone for joining us tonight. It was a lively discussion, but I think an important one. We've seen what we've been able to do in just two years. We've been able to organize this community. We've been able to be a voice in City Hall. We've been able to fund projects that you care about. In the past, money will go to some massive nonprofit, but the everyday person wouldn't receive the services that they needed. We've been able to fund projects that are visible and that are changing people's lives every single day. And this is why I asked for your support for two more years. Many people say, are you going to be the politician that gets elected and just goes away? Or are you going to be the politician to be with us every single step of the way? And I can say for the past two years, and many people in this room have seen me walk the streets, have meetings with anyone who wanted them, join you at rallies, and fall for the issues that the people in this district truly care about. Whether it's housing, whether it's workers' rights, whether it's protection of women's bodies. I've been there, making sure that this community is well represented. And I ask you, and I would be honored to have your vote on November seventh.
Thank you. New York is suffering from Century City Law. And I will add Century City Law. I will amend it so that we do not suffer this bottomless fiscal crisis that we cannot afford and create inhuman conditions on many shelters and streets, streets. And I will solve the crime. I will double the punishment if the crime is committed on subways and buses, public transportation. And we need people who have management experiences, not just advocates. I have a long, successful experience as an engineering executive, and I hope to serve my community. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much both. I think we both got a lot of information out of this. And I thank everybody for coming, and I wish everybody have a good evening. And for both festivals, to both of you. Thank you.
Just want to say, let's give a hand to David Lee, who's done a remarkable job. And also Diana, who's been holding this back for a month.